We're calling.
No, where do you want you want?
Oh, well, yeah.
You want to sit down here this time? TJ, how you doing?
I'm doing well, Mark, and there's all.
Not too bad, not so bad. You're not wearing your hat. You're wearing the wrong hat. You had your last time I was here, you're wearing your Pinterest championship hat.
I was here this week.
Okay, you are. I didn't see.
Yeah, that's that's what I picture that.
All right, that's fair.
Well, it's camouflage.
It's camouflage, yeah, look in the back, I couldn't even see it. Is Cara joining us?
On the phone. She's.
In remote again?
I thought she was, uh.
Is she on?
I don't think she is.
I don't see anybody waiting.
Sorry for having that to you.
Meeting open at six oh five. Whatever that is.
I just wanted to do that.
Oh.
Who's chair in this meeting?
Where the chair?
You, you're sitting on the lead chair.
Is that what it is?
Yes.
Uh, it is six oh four. Begin the meeting, um, call, I call this meeting to order. Need to confirm that there's a quorum present, is a quorum two out of three.
Yeah.
Nice, so there is a quorum present. Is Cara on the phone? By chance?
Don't see her.
No.
Last time she was late joining in.
Yeah, she was, uh, she was trying to download Zoom, so.
Right, right.
So, I'd like to, uh, first discuss the, you know, approve the agenda for tonight's meeting. Um, well, there's no records to examine from the previous meeting, from what I can see.
No. That'll be next week.
We have two action items to review. One is to re- uh, review and approve warrant seven, accounts payable and wired payments. Is that in this?
Yeah, they're in the red folder.
There.
There's three of them.
Guys. Here is warrant number seven, counts payable, if you want to take a look at that, I'll look at the wired.
Sit there.
Good, yeah, we can do that. That's on the back, yeah. We're gonna move over there if we don't have our backs to the audience. Yeah, my foot very ruby. Yeah. Now we're pretty closer to TJ.
Yeah, there is. I'm not normally a charity, wiping up.
That's okay, you're doing okay, still some.
Thank you, TJ. Okay, I moved to approve, uh, warrant number seven, accounts payable and wired payments.
Second.
Any discussion?
None.
Done?
None.
None.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, aye.
And none opposed.
And none opposed. Guys.
Pro warrant number.
Was there, this is, uh.
Payable.
Payment for, uh, payroll?
No, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed?
None.
What was the last thing? Sorry.
No, I, I.
Was it just these two?
She said there was three in there.
There's three.
I think there's probably a wired one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
These words will come to you in your sleep.
I know.
Eventually, yeah. Very often enough.
Yeah.
Not officially chairs. Um. Okay. So I'm motion to review and approve warrant seven payroll payment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No, Jack, you should say aye as well.
Aye as well?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? No. All right. That closes that part of our discussion. Okay, we have new business. Uh, Gateway Regional School District Superintendent Melissa, is she here?
She is.
Melissa.
I am.
Batarazzo?
Yes, well put, and I have two guests with me as well.
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
Please join us.
Yeah.
And, and we, uh, announced that this meeting is going to be recorded.
Oh.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Being, being recorded.
Thank you.
This meeting is being recorded.
Good to know.
Now you did.
Well, thank you for the opportunity, uh, town manager as well as, uh, select board. I'm Melissa Manarazzo, I joined Gateway Regional School District this August as the newest superintendent. Um, and, uh, we have had a relatively smooth opening to school. We opened, looks like we now have seven hundred and thirty-four students this year.
Wow.
Ninety-three of whom are joining us in Blanford, so thank you.
Wow, what was the last year, do you know?
Uh, last year in March, it was only eighty-one, so. Not, not sure, but, um, but that is certainly helpful and, um. We also will be back again as we head into the budget season and, um, those challenging discussions which are ahead. We wanted to express our gratitude that you're continuing to help us, uh, save for our roof replacement, which, um, we are learning about as we speak. And like, we will come up in the coming years. Um, but I'm not the only new person in the central office at Gateway, so I wanted to make sure you all also got to meet, um, my colleagues who are new to their roles. Some of them are very familiar to you, so.
Hi, everyone, my name is Amy Neeson, I'm the school business administrator and I'm replacing Stephanie Fisk, who was previously the assistant superintendent for, um, finance and operations. And, um, previously, I've been at Gateway for the past eight years, working in the vision impairment program. I was the vision impairment program coordinator. And I'm continuing to serve in a mentorship capacity to our newly hired staff in the program. So, um, everything is going well there, but I'm glad to be in the business office and working in central office, working with the budget and getting to know the layout of central office. And so, um, everything is running as expected so far as we finish out the first quarter at Gateway. Um, budget's looking pretty good overall, especially considering some of our early challenges over the summer with health insurance changes with revenue increases and things of that nature. Um, so I want to just welcome you anytime you have questions or anything about the budget, I'm more than happy to answer them, just reach out.
Right. Um, and I am Stacy Stewart, and while I am not new to Gateway, um, most people know me as either the administrative assistant to the superintendent, um, or the school committee secretary, so I have taken one of all of, uh, the human resources director. So I've shifted more to the staffing part, um, as well as the benefits, um, you know, and insurance and some payroll and, and that kind of thing. So, um, I'm looking forward to working with the different departments of each of the towns, um, and kind of just furthering our communication and our, our network, so. Excellent.
Are there any questions or?
Well, welcome, I would say, I know you guys have already been here for a while, but welcome again, I would say. Um, I don't necessarily have any specific questions, um. Do you?
No.
For them?
No.
Do you have any challenges or concerns that you want to talk about?
Not particularly, not yet, yeah. And, um, Amy and I were just going over the budget timeline because Christina and I discussed making sure we get in early and get those discussions started early. I know you have some big, um, expenditures coming as well.
Right.
In the town, so we will be attentive to that and starting to pick that off, unfortunately, rather than some.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, I guess.
Question about the twelve new students?
I did have a question about the twelve new students.
Yeah.
We under, and this is purely rumor, because I've.
Well, the student count did go up.
Yeah, is that the twelve, were there twelve new students recently that were added, or what, what drove that increase?
Ah.
Was it recent?
So we have, we have two families moved in, um, I believe in Blanford, so that would explain it. Between them, they have twelve children from kindergarten to, I think, eleven, maybe twelve. Um, and so, uh, their addition was, um, significant for us, given how small we are.
Yeah.
Um, some of the students, um, all of the students are in school now, and so we're excited.
Great.
Okay, well, your biggest issues will be when the budget.
Yeah, sure.
Honestly, I was gonna do the math and pull up the budget to say, what's the cost?
Why not, why not there yet? Yeah.
And then.
It's time for that.
You just didn't have to go in there, but.
That information, yes, it could, it could make a difference, you also may be graduating students, you know, that could reduce your number for FY twenty-seven. I would prefer we could keep a few, um, just to continue to be a healthy community, but yes, I understand that.
You know, I personally, I feel it's, it's healthy for Blanford to see more children come into town, so, you know, it's good for the town.
Yeah.
As well.
Something attracted them, so.
Right.
I'm here, I'm good.
So, but we will be asking that one.
Keep your eyes out on the March census.
And just, and just so you all know, I know that sometimes there can be fluctuations from town to town, but I do intend to try to keep it like capped for the entire district, for all district towns at two point five percent increase or lower, so that's kind of what we aim for.
Been your, yeah. Last year, the same thing.
Exactly, so we always try to keep it at or below that level if we possibly can.
So you're not expecting anything new?
Other than that might. I don't think so, you, you know about the roof coming up, things like that, exactly.
Capital.
So the, yeah, the major capital project with the roof, but other than that, nothing additional this time.
Did Cara tell you?
No.
Any questions?
No, I don't.
Okay, well, thank you for the.
Well, thank you for coming in and being touched. Please, you know, if anything comes up, come up and see us.
Certainly, yeah. Thank you. And if you have questions, please let us know. Shoot us a email or.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Drive safe.
Thanks. So, next up is for new business is to talk about the process for potential temporary work. So, um, this is, you want to, I don't think.
Wait, did we have members from other boards who are going to join us, or?
Well, we thought we were, uh, looks like.
Thought this was a joint.
Yeah, but you can definitely come and, uh, right.
I guess some things happened because other people were, uh, not available, I'm not sure.
Did you ask the board how to join? Uh, I don't need them, I mean, we don't need them.
We have zoning board and planning board?
Yeah.
But one of each.
Yes, so it's definitely.
It's one of, you're right, so no, no forum on either board, so you're not, you're not here, you're not convening a meeting.
The zoning board of appeals.
Right.
Let's give.
Yeah, and I think, uh, conservation has happened there, maybe.
Oh, well, Mr. Gates is not there, but, um, the remaining members of conservation may be down there, I can go take a look.
To wait and see.
We'll wait for Christina, there's folks on the phone. Be the kids, right, October?
I think that's the conservation.
Yeah.
Plant those.
Yeah, there's.
There's no one down there.
Okay, no, all they aren't there.
Do you want to introduce yourself first?
Yeah, my name is me, uh, John Ikeman from KP Law. John does, uh, a lot of the town's, uh, land use and, and, uh, real estate practice. And so, we want to make sure he was available to, to the select board, but also to, uh, the land use boards as they grapple with this issue and specifically to discuss the, uh, machinations with respect to a, uh, potential moratorium on, on solar facilities. So we're, we're really here, um, to answer your questions, assist you however you see fit. John, do you want to make a brief introduction?
Uh, I suppose, um, so, maybe just jumping into the subject of moratorium. So, the town asked about, um, possibility of adopting some regulation to allow it time to look at the impact of solar facilities and battery energy storage facilities on the town and potentially adopt some regulation addressing those impacts. Uh, right now, the town has, I think, fairly extensive zoning bylaw regulating solar facilities and an even more extensive bylaw regulating better battery energy storage facilities. But, as we understand it, um, the recent impacts to the town in the form of petitions for solar facilities and a potential impending petition for best have raised concerns in the town about that, how that's going to affect the town. Um, one of the things we initially suggested was you can look at your zoning bylaws, uh, number one, and determine whether protect, perhaps, the concerns that have been raised can be addressed by changing, amending your zoning bylaws, making regulations more specific, tightening them. Uh, the one thing that I noticed immediately was that you allow large-scale solar facilities and BESs by special permit in the agricultural district in the town, that covers approximately at least ninety percent of the town.
Right.
Um, you don't have to allow them in ninety percent of the town, you can limit them, you can't prohibit them. The state law tells us we can't prohibit solar facilities, nor can we prohibit, prohibit BESs that are basically providing capacity for solar facilities in the area. But, we can require a special permit and we can limit the areas in which those facilities get placed. Right now, there is really very little restriction on where they can be placed. So, maybe one of the first subjects, for consideration in the town, looking at the potential impacts that were unanticipated, be to look at where we want to allow these facilities. Um, we suggested as part of this process that you may want to consider a zoning moratorium. The zoning moratorium is a temporary pause on a particular use in the town, it's a zoning bylaw. It would expressly say this particular use is basically paused for a period of six months. There won't be any special permits for, let's say, large-scale solar, for six months while the town goes through a planning process to determine what potential changes to zoning regulation the town may want to consider and adopt to address zoning. Um, because it's a zoning bylaw, it requires a two-thirds vote in the town, uptown meeting, it has to be approved by the attorney general um, as being consistent with state law. Um, these types of moratoriums have been successful in the past. This presents a little more of a challenge for Blanford because you already have a solar bylaw, you already address solar facilities by regulation in the town. So, to have a moratorium that passes AG review, you have to articulate planning reasons why you need to pause things now so that you can adopt regulation, you need to identify the impacts of these solar facilities that were unanticipated. You need to identify what the negative impact of those, and those facilities will be on the town, what can you reasonably expect? That forms a basis for a sustainable moratorium. One thing.
Can I just, can you just add, add that it can't be?
Who's just getting there.
Thank you.
Wouldn't be, so, moratoriums are temporary pauses, they are not prohibitions, they are temporary prohibitions. They prohibit to allow the town to look at regulations and change their regulation as necessary. Once the moratorium, if it's adopted, if the AG approves, once it expires, the zoning bylaw goes back to the way it was, unless you've adopted regulation in the meantime to change things. So, the purpose of a moratorium is not to prohibit solar in the town entirely. Just to make a quick blanket statement, the state, the expletive brands, the executive brands, and the courts have all told us in very uncertain, very certain terms, you cannot prohibit solar in the town. You can regulate it, and that's what we're trying to do here, give the town a chance, or the moratorium would do, give the town a chance to look at its regulation and say, given what we are now seeing about the density of solar applications, given what we're seeing about the potential location, which maybe we really didn't think about, we just said we'll go everywhere. Um, maybe there's, we should have some regulation to address this, the moratorium will give you an opportunity to do that. Last but not least, the moratorium is in effect the day it's voted by town meetings. The attorney general will review, attorney general may not approve it, you may not find the reasons that we give sufficient, but once it's voted and until the attorney general reviews it, if it remains in effect, it will not allow solar facilities to, to ask for special permits during the time it's in effect. So, you know, while we can't guarantee that this is going to be sustained by the attorney general, you're looking at a finite period of time, six months would be recommended, potentially a year, to pause zoning to allow this to happen. Attorney general will take three to six months to review things. So you will have potentially that period of time, again, though it has to be approved by town meeting, you know, to go to town meeting with this, it has to be approved there by two thirty. So, in the meantime, even before you get to town meeting, you want to be thinking now about, if you want to consider this, what would be the basis for a moratorium, what, why do we need to pause? What concerns do we have now about solar going forward, not prohibiting it? But, how do we regulate it so that it addresses our needs?
That we may not have had when we put the bylaws.
Exactly.
First place, right?
New concerns, new issues.
Right, and one thing that I was not aware of, but somebody pointed out, was that the recent expansion of the substation that's been approved by, I'm gonna get the entity right, what's the state entity, DPU, Department of Public Utilities? That has, the purpose of that is to expand the capacity of the grid that's necessary for the solar facilities in this part of state so that the energy can be stored that's produced by these facilities. That alone, right there, which was not anticipated originally, as potentially resulted in an increase not expected in this town, a number of facilities. That would be the start, in my opinion, for a reasonable basis to pause things. But it should be, you need, we talked about looking at, what were the percentage of, or what were the number of facilities that were being sought in the town? Permits that were sought before this, what about surrounding towns, how was it increased? What's, what's the increase look like, where, where are they going, what are the potential impacts based on location? Those are all form of basis, and you want to know that before you adopt this, because attorney general is likely to ask.
Right.
They want to see the basis.
Well, what about like the number of solar facilities?
Right. Yes.
You know, that, we already have three, there's three more that want to come in.
Yep.
And down the road from the jumbo telegraph, we're, we're hearing that there might be four more. I think, how much can the town absorb?
But I think the concern, well, that, I think the concern that, that John is referencing is that having adopted a broad solar bylaw to begin with, that clearly the town recognized that there were going to be a number of these facilities. The issue now is in the pause, whether we could point to something, not just saying, well, there are going to be a lot more than we thought. That probably i- in and of itself may not be enough. It's, you know, how, how, how much is a lot more, the im- the impact of the best that now allows them to propagate at a greater rate, that you're gonna have a lot more than, than reasonably anticipated because the solar facilities on their own can only do so much, the best now allows, uh, an even greater impact. So, I think what we're talking about in, in advance of any town meetings, again, as, as John said, we get a town meeting vote, two-thirds voted town meeting. We, I think we were in a pretty good place that, we're gonna get the two-thirds voted town meeting. But, then you've got under, under chapter forty, section thirty-two, the, the review by the attorney general, they specifically have a ninety-day period. Very often, we see with more complex and difficult bylaws, the attorney general will reach out to town council and ask for more time to review. We want to give a- as much time, as much information, because as we're talking about, attorney general may or may not approve it, but it's in place once voted at town meeting. So, if you could buy a longer review period, you're buying that much longer a, a moratorium, even if at the end of the day, the attorney general disapproves the moratorium, you, you, you got that period during the review. So we want to come up with, in advance of town meeting, kind of the, the planning and study justification, because a mor- moratorium is intended for planning and study, we've got to overcome the idea that we did some planning and some study to come up with the extensive bylaw we already have. It's not just a simple bylaw, and so it shows that there was already some consideration. Get, what are we thinking about now, what are the things we need to think about, we need to study, we need to consider, you guys need to consider as the, as the, the town zoning boards, what are the things that the town, uh, through the, the executive body and, and the land use boards are going to be studying that justifies this, this, uh, extent? Especially if we're, if we're asking, you know, six month, if we're asking for a year, the longer it is, the harder it is. So, that's, that's something we need to think about, and, uh, it would, it would be part of our consideration in drafting the warrant article that comes before town meeting, because there's, there's the, the bylaw itself is going to have its justification. You have, you have, I, I imagine a bunch of warehouse clauses, the, you know, a bunch of introductory clauses in your mora- the moratorium doesn't look entirely like, and yeah, you've got, you've got a sample, it's very simple. Yeah, but again, but yeah, in terms of, um, authority and purpose, you're gonna, the, the, that's introductory, and you want to make sure that that's, that, that there's enough there.
So how strong is it gonna be when we don't have, we have, yes, the three that are looking now, right? And not all of them have filed, correct?
Correct.
And then we have others where these vendors have said, oh, we got two more, or four more, or whatever that number is. It's not like I have a piece of paper that says, well, they filed, to be able to say to the attorney general, we have six, we have four, we have three that have filed. And you, you know, because these are arbitrary, you know, we don't know the facts yet on some of it.
Well, I think you can certainly, I think, look at, um, two things, number one, do you know the capacity is going to be expanded with the substation?
Yeah.
That'll be right there, you can, you can treat these inquiries as serious, serious indication that you're likely to see more applications, you have land, you have, you're at an elevation where you're gonna have slopes that are really good for this. Um, and, yeah, it's, it's an area that, uh, solar development, you're gonna see it, you're already seeing in other towns, you can reference that. Um, as to the numbers, to your question earlier, there is no magic number, you, it's pretty hard to justify saying, we have three, we can, six is it. You need to base that in some sort of, what is the impact of six on the town? Where are they, why, why is that good, why is that bad? What does that number mean, it's not just a magic number. To this point, the courts have looked at, generally, in terms of what, how far can you take your regulation in terms of limiting the numbers? They're looking at acreage of land area in the town. Um, they struck down a bylaw that limited, uh, solar to around less than two percent of the town. You're at ninety percent, there's a lot of room, we told. And ninety percent. Right, so, that's probably a better measure, but again, even then, you're looking at, why is this, why is this land important to us? What is important about maintaining this land free of solar? That's what you need to articulate to address in the regulation, to support a moratorium. Um, one other thing you do, as Mark talked about, we have a little bit of grace period with the attorney general, but you don't want to depend on that, you want to proceed with a good faith effort to try to guide your help, what's going on here, because the attorney general sees that there is no good faith effort. You're not gonna get six months.
Yeah, the rapid, which we heard.
Get a quick review.
Right.
That's gonna be negative, so.
So. What you're basically telling us, trying to keep the pristine of a nice, quiet rural town, is really a pipe dream. Um, according to the state, because I was on the committee when we first started with the, uh, great community. Right. And, as I look back, they never mentioned to us large scales solar. All right, when we're on the committee meetings, the, what was discussed was solar and we were led to believe, well, this is solar on your home, or an array in your yard to.
How long, how long ago was that, TJ?
Six years.
Yeah, that's, and then, and a lot has happened since then. Yeah, that's, and that, and a lot has happened since then.
Yes, but none of us were kept to date.
Right, no, I totally agree, it's just, it's just interesting, because I remember that discussion, I remember the discussion when we're talking about. Uh, the wind turbines and all, all that we've, we've gone through in developing in, in Blanford, the issues of. You know, green communities and, and, and clean energy and how this has evolved, because you never anticipated. A battery energy storage system in, in Blanford.
Right.
And, and none of us were even talking about that six years ago. So what, and, and that's part of what John's getting at, is what has changed in the intervening period? And, and knowing that a, a, a best facility is um. There, there's a reason you put it in here, as, it's not just for its own, its own good, it, it allows more of these facilities. To be developed and, and implemented, because now you have.
You got the ever source infrastructure, the best facility is separate.
Right, but it, but, but it's, it's not so. Right, exact, right, and that's, and so that, you, you, you're looking at. A totality and, and getting back to what TJ was talking about, six years ago. You were talking about throwing a few solar panels on your house.
That's true.
And, and, and then we started seeing more and more of the ground, the ground mounted, and we addressed that in the bylaw. But it's, it's kind of snowballed. And, and we're trying to get control of, of how far that snowball rolls and how big it gets.
Or another uh thing that we have to consider too. Like, uh, we have two solar fields that already have clear cut almost two hundred acres. Okay, so. That's, that's another issue. You know, how much acreage are we gonna lose to solar? How much acreage are we gonna lose in forest land? Now, the state owns. A lot of forest land in Blanford, so doesn't spring field, you know, so I mean. How do, I mean, how do we get this in a simple moratorium so that it would? We could actually postpone this for six months or a year. So we can get some kind of uh strategy to save this, a lot of people moved up here because they wanna be. You know, on their own in a way and yet in a community, and this is one of the story, the whole character of the town.
But I think, and I don't mean it's, it's no dog over here, there are a couple of things at, at, at play. You need to be studying all of this, you need to be studying it right away, so, because you, you, you can't count on. A, if you're gonna get a moratorium and B, you know, if you don't, how long that review period is going to go for? So we asked, we, we asked for six months, there's, there's a ninety day review period. If, if there's not appropriate justification, that review's gonna go quickly, if there's appropriate justification, it requires the, the attorney general's study. Maybe you'll get more time and maybe you'll actually get your six months. But you wanna make sure that you're not sitting around waiting to hear from the attorney general and not studying this stuff, you gotta study it right away. And so you guys, you gotta prepare your justification for the moratorium, but then you gotta take advantage of any time you get. So not waiting to see, gee, what's the age you're gonna say, probably not waiting to see what's gonna happen at town meeting, you know, get. Get going on the, the, the issues and, and what you intend to regulate and how you can regulate. Uh, legitimately, and those are some things I, I think, John, you could probably talk to some of that. But uh whether we need to bring in a consultant, what, what, what we knew. To start that study process and not just be waiting until we get to town meeting. Right, there, there's a lot that, that needs to be going on, I know, I know you know that.
Yeah.
Obviously, you, you just, you just appropriated, you know, two hundred thousand dollars for the, for the committee, and I know there, there are several different components. But uh at the end of the day, there, all these components are interlinked.
Just, just to be clear, though, you don't have to have a full blown planning study in place. To enact a moratorium, the purpose of the moratorium is to give you time to do that.
Yeah.
You just need a justification now based on what you're seeing in terms of influx. And understanding what the impact is in the town and why that was unexpected in terms of what you previously adopted.
But we wanna take advantage of the time, uh, as much as we have.
Yeah, there's two products, right, one is keep moving to figure it out, the second is get the moratorium.
Right.
Hope to get more time.
Thing from John's perspective, you know, it's just what you could do, you, you go to town meeting, you pass that moratorium, then you gotta justify it to the attorney general. You've gotta be thinking about, you know. Now and through and, and, and to the end of the moratorium, if you get it. What you're doing overall, because there, there, it is a, it is a pretty significant thing, process.
Right, because ultimately the purpose is. Do we need to adjust our zoning bylaws, so let's think about how we need to do that.
Yeah.
Whether you get the moratorium or not, you need to be thinking about that.
Because, yeah, because at the end of that process, hopefully we're going back to town meeting with, with amended zones. And hopefully it's amended zoning, because then again, that amended zoning, again, if passed by town meeting. Goes back to the attorney general for further review. And we don't want, and that's even more critical, because. The review under the statute is to determine whether your, your bylaws. In this case, your zoning bylaws are consistent with state law. And obviously, state law is, and, and, and we know the position even of the attorney general. Is to favor solar development and, and alternative, alternative energy systems.
Yeah.
And so you need to make sure that when you're enacting this, this amended zoning. Based on whatever study you, you are able to accomplish during the moratorium period or the review period. Up to the point where that moratorium is or is not rejected. Uh, that, that you're setting it up, setting it up so that when we go to town meeting. Um, after the planning board has its public hearing and ultimately bring out board a recommendation. On a zoning amendment, that that zoning amendment is gonna pass muster with the attorney general. So that, 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 that's the next, that's the next hurdle.
And just one last thing on the planning process, maybe not last, but.
Listen to him.
I mean, I, I know the town is, small town is very limited sources, you don't have a planner. You, yeah, part of the process is trying to reach out to get assistance outside of the town, the planning cooperative that's in the area Pioneer Valley. Um, to the extent that there are funds available to. If that's not sufficient to get a consultant to help the town look at their zoning bylaws.
We just appropriated two hundred thousand dollars.
Say that again.
We just appropriated two hundred thousand dollars.
For what?
To help us through it.
But yeah, good, alright, occasionally. Right, but we, we. We'll start with the sources that are available, we don't thought.
Well, that's the idea.
Push that cost back onto these vendors, but. At the end of the day, we don't wanna stop, we don't wanna be. Caught when we can't move.
But that's why, like John's saying, to talk to Pioneer Valley, try to get some assistance. Uh, I know there was a discussion about, you know, that, that grant program, it's not even really a thing yet. But if there's any mechanism so you could supplement, because the idea was, you know, we appropriated two hundred thousand dollars. But we don't really wanna spend it if we can avoid it, because that's a huge amount of money for Blanford.
The grant program you're talking about is the grant program that'll put into place for the upgrades to the grid.
Right.
The substation et cetera.
Right, exactly, that's not really a thing. So, and, 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 you know, Blanford is, is very rich in. Property, we have, we, this, this, it's a surprisingly large town. On the ground.
Yeah, three acres.
Yeah. But uh, but, you know, resource.
Miles, I'm sorry, three miles.
Yeah, I was, good, great.
That's fine.
I can think of a farm up the block that would eat that up pretty fast. Um, yeah, 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 so, um, yeah, so I mean, we. Like John said, you, 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 you have, you don't have your own planner. Christina's, Christina's got plenty of things on her plate already, and this, this, this is very specialized stuff. I think you've done an incredible job pulling together information materials. But uh, running with that, it, and, and I don't know how much discussion you've had already with the Pioneer Valley folks.
I uh reached out there, my, I have a meeting with uh. Kimberly Robinson on Thursday. And uh, it's kind of like a meet and greet with.
Okay, that's a start.
The state people.
Yeah.
And uh, so. This will give me a, a basis to get the communication going, see if we can get a committee together. And see what.
What is the discussion, legislative delegation?
Do you wanna? Just with um Paul Marks and Baldega.
Yeah.
Uh, Paul Marks has been in communication, which is good, and has sent. Someone from his group in, and they've also sent someone from the small solar. Board or citing board, um, then.
The energy facility citing board?
Right.
Yeah, that's, I saw it.
Yeah, so that's a substation piece for them.
Yeah.
That's supposed to be DPU.
When you say substation, you're talking about ever source, you're talking about something else.
No, I'm talking about the expansion of the ever source facility on.
That's one piece.
Right.
Right.
They also are looking at regulations for all the smaller solar operations, not just the substation.
This, who is the?
No, not the.
Who's from ESB, she's from, she's not.
Okay.
Yeah, the energy facility citing board is.
Well, that was anything greater than twenty-five megawatt.
Yeah, okay.
Right, okay.
Um. So we're just trying to learn about those two constituents, right, and under- understand that. Um. But this, the fact of reaching out is what we really need to do.
Yeah.
Absolutely, for a planning consultant.
I think.
Um, the other thing, just to lay it out there, with substation, just to, you know, one of the things that we are hearing. Is the reason why they wanna come here is because they need to be close to this, they wanna be as close to that substation as they could be. And because it's cheaper for them.
Of course.
Well, that substation is practically in town.
Right.
That's why we're seeing more, right? Um, so that's, that's a challenge, so that's something I think that. We could all talk about with the bylaws as to where, where do we wanna see this, right? But I, I. I'm happy that you guys are here to at least. Explain the moratorium and explain that, it's not that you could stop it.
Mm-hmm.
You start putting bylaws, making them stronger, it can't be, oh, you can't come here.
But it's a tool and a toolbox, yeah, to, to allow the, the planning process.
Go ahead.
Um, so. Say, say the town votes for the moratorium. How would that affect? Projects that are. In the review stage right now. Would it put us, put it, would it halt them, where they're, where they're at?
If the permit is, they're in the process right now, if they don't obtain a permit. Before the publication, the first notice of the planning board hearing of the moratorium. It would basically halt them right there. They can continue to go forward, but they can't really do anything, because at that point. Um, the use is not, not allowed to use for six months, if the moratorium is six months.
So, so, yeah, the, the statute lays out a process whereby. Depending on where you are, you, you, you may. Avoid the impact of the moratorium and possibly avoid the impact of future zoning. But if you, as John was saying, if you, if you haven't obtained your building permit yet, and you're just in that stage. And the moratorium is, it's not even the passage at town meeting. It's the publication of the planning board's uh public hearing. So your publication is what kind of cuts off. Their, their ability to get that permit if they haven't already obtained it.
They're subject. You're subject to zoning bylaws later adopted unless you have a permit in hand. So if they don't have a permit in hand, they would be subject to a moratorium provided. They can have the permit at the time you affect first notice the, when we're healthcare.
And that, and, and that's regardless, again, of whether the attorney general ultimately approves or not. Again, as John was saying, you know, that, that's the line when it's deemed effective. Until otherwise dis- disapproved by the attorney general.
Yeah, the plot just starts again.
Yeah, no, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Now, is there? Is there an outline? Or roadmap on how we start with this moratorium?
Can we, we actually. Give Christina a compliment.
Yeah, 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 so that's, that's a start, and, you know, and, and John.
That, that's the outline.
Um, yeah.
We've used this form. Over the years, um, attorney general certainly recognized the form, because it really. The details that need to be filled in are the ones we've talked about, we have seen from the town. But this has essentially all the legal language you need.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
And this could come from you, okay?
Well.
We'll do the, we'll do the document, but do we send it in or you send it?
Oh, no, we mean, no, once town meeting approves it. Yeah, so the town, the town clerk has a specific submissions, the town clerk has a form. That has to be filled out, but talks about when the hearings were held and notice there are a bunch of check offs. And it's the same as any other, any other town meeting action on a bylaw or zoning bylaw, and then it gets submitted by the town clerk.
Okay, great.
Sometimes the attorney general will call us up and wanna discuss. Uh, be- before they take action, I can't advertise, both of us have gotten those phone calls. I see this, can we talk about it, and sometimes we can convince them, sometimes we can't. Um, sometimes we can come up with a justification, um, and, and sometimes the result is instead of getting a disapproval, you get. You get warnings or different, different things, that's more on the, on the actual zoning side or bylaw amendment, that's the moratorium. Probably wouldn't, wouldn't go quite like that, but uh we do, we have a very close relationship with the uh attorney generals, we just the law unit, so we, we talk to them.
Close, but no control.
No, absolutely, no, if we, if we control that TJ, then, then, wow, we, we would really be special.
Who would wanna have take the lead when we sign that?
Well.
Well, the committee exists.
Yeah, I think. It's, it's the committee.
Committee? I'm absolutely no problem with it. I just wanna make clear who's taking the lead, so no one knows, oh, I thought you had it, I thought you had it.
Yeah, no, we, we definitely. Well, we did vote to uh make a committee.
Yep.
So we should, that should be our first uh step.
Okay.
I do, I do wanna indicate, you know, some. Concern and uh management in terms of access to us.
Mm-hmm.
That's gotta go through Christina.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that's known, then, and it's not meant as offense to the committee, but you know, you, you wind up with. A lot of people contacting town council. We, we're answerable to you through Christina, and if there's a lot of people. You wanna, you know, you're gonna rank up a bill for, for stuff that you might not want. So we wanna make sure to control that, because ultimately, obviously, it's gotta, it's gotta go to you. Uh, but, but it's gotta make sure we, we shepherd it through and we're, we'll review it before.
Totally. So, so.
That point.
So the committee. Christina's number one on that committee.
No, she's not.
No. No, it's gotta go through her.
They, well, they will, yeah, but she's not on the.
Right, committee will come back.
This committee, and, and, and the other thing to keep in mind, you know, the committee can do a bunch of stuff as it wants. But when it comes to spending any of that money, they, they, they go to Christina, she'll bring it to you.
Right.
They, they don't have spending authority.
Right.
Okay.
That's why we wrote that very specifically to make sure it comes back to you, because ultimately, you know, we're, 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 we're guarding the towns, check.
Yeah.
No.
Cause you gotta preserve those resources the maximum extent possible, so if the committee and, and DJ, you can certainly. Give them the information you've compiled, but if the committee can work with Pioneer Valley and any other resource they can come up with. And they can come up with ideas, because the moratorium itself, I, you know, again, the zoning bylaw, it, it winds up. Uh, at a public hearing for the planning board, but they can do a lot of that, that background work.
Right.
But, you know, obviously, the sooner the better, because you've got, you've got applications, you've got. Facil- uh, uh, interested parties, and like John said, if they're, if they're getting their permits. Your moratorium becomes a little less and less effective if they're all permitted already. Then I'm, I obviously, we, we, we'll hopefully catch some of them, we wanna catch more than, than fewer. And so the sooner this gets done, the more, the, the law, the, the more, more effective that line is.
The committee's meeting on Wednesday night, so we'll discuss this on Wednesday night.
Okay. And their me- their meetings are posted?
Yeah.
Good.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
If I, if I can suggest just maybe focusing. What you're gonna do with the committee.
Sure.
Um, the one thing we talked about is obviously the size of the zoning district, so one thing the committee wants to look at is. Is that size appropriate, can we reduce it, if you talk to a consultant, the question is. How do we reduce this and stay within the law? How far can we reduce it? Number two, you want the committee looking at what are the negative impacts? Of the solar facilities that we've seen. And the anticipated solar facilities. You know, based on location, based on size. What are those impacts, that's what we're trying to address. And then three, which is the last thing, but it's still important. What is, is unexpected about that, why is that disruptive in a way that we didn't anticipate? Based on the, the regulation we just adopted a few years ago. That will help support the moratorium, the first two are really all about adopting regulations.
Okay.
Now, I'm happy to put that in an email too, if that helps.
That'd be great, we'll send it to Christina, she'll make sure.
Yes, she probably has memorized at this point, but I will.
Pretty much. We do have a little communication.
Any other questions to you guys for a moment, that you have?
Oh, good for now. You're gonna like it all about it more.
Well.
No, it, this is, this is the process, right?
It is. It is.
Well, we really appreciate you guys coming.
No, I think that's, I think it's helpful, and I think it's, again, it's important because you have time, you don't have a lot of time, and, and time is never your friends. And, uh, there are a lot of facets to this, because you're, you're, again, you're working on the. The moratorium, but you've got also be thinking that the end goal is the zoning itself.
Got it.
Yeah, okay. Good.
Thank you.
And, you know, we, we hear from Christina and we jumped.
I'm internally grateful for you guys, because I harassed you more times than.
That's not harassment. Good, good.
Do you have any other questions, TJ, you want?
I make sure I was meeting with them tomorrow.
Uh, whatever information you, you dig up, I mean, it's, yeah, even if it's just at a meeting.
Well, unfortunately, the gentleman that I worked for or worked with on the Green Community, now Mayor Hoyle. So that might be a problem, but I, I think Eric Wysh and, and, uh.
Yeah.
There's a couple of.
And Green Communities set a really low bar in terms of what you have to allow for solar, as you pointed out.
Right.
Minimum amount of allowing solar was enough to get you qualification, it didn't address any of these issues.
Yeah, well, it really wasn't anticipating what was happening. Good.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much, I appreciate you sending them down.
Absolutely, and I head up to the farm now.
Thank you.
I just wanted to let you know that I may have misunderstood tips, um, about getting on the agenda, he's not on the agenda, but he's here, so I don't know if that's.
We can give him one, well, no, do you think?
Yeah, I anticipated by the chair.
All right, thank you, Mark.
There you are, TJ, thank you.
Do you want a copy of it?
Yeah.
What is it?
This is the outline.
Okay, well, that's good and bad, right?
Yeah, yeah, always.
Just copy the outline for her.
All right, sure.
All right, thank you.
But this is basically informational kind of, uh.
Time for me to make sure we know what the historical society is up to and, uh. We'll, we'll, uh. Just go quickly through the, the list here, shouldn't take terribly long and make sure that everybody's. Up to speed, um, you probably have heard that the DAR is coming in to. Do, they, they are spending a huge amount of energy, there are going to be all sorts of people brought in from outside. Uh, for this, this dedication, for the scientific science. There, the, there's some veterans, there's, uh, uh, there's a reenacting. Uh, I think that we will have some guns going off. Whatever, and, and they're, they're really trying to make quite a, quite a thing about it, and you'll, you'll note, uh. On the same day, uh, Ted Worth is a, a person who has had orchestras in. The area for the last forty years, and, and, uh, has, he has, uh. Been desperate for a place to, to perform, uh, this half-brow house. Bavarian, they, they thought they had a gig here, they, they have to, in order to collect their money. Uh, they have to perform, and so they are actually going to put on a performance at the White Church. Uh, at, uh, eleven o'clock on the same day as they, uh, so anybody who wants to hear some, uh. A half-brow house of Bavarian music, uh, the people are, uh, encouraged to come. This, this, uh, Ted Worth has, uh, generously donated a secondhand Hammond organ to the White Church. So, uh, that should be actually ready to be, uh, demonstrated for anybody who's interested in, in, in what's going on at the White Church. The ghost talk that, uh, has really taken off like a, a skyrocket with, uh, with, uh. Uh, Jane Roman, uh, being in charge and having, uh. Some twenty-eight-year-old young, uh, people who are all excited about, uh, becoming, uh, involved with theatrical. Types of things, and they've done a lot of research on, on, uh, I think there are eight different, uh, uh. People, people that are going to be memorialized in, in the old cemetery there, and two to four on, on, uh. The, uh, eighteenth is, is when that's happening, so we can't after, after the DAR. And, uh, the only thought there is that, um, we will let the police department know that. We're, 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 this being the first time we've ever done this, uh, we're not sure how large a group of people are going to be. Uh, there, and, uh, they're, they're talking about between two and four having. May- maybe three different groups go through the cemetery, uh, uh, maybe fifty or twenty minutes apart or whatever. And, and that, uh, most of the parking, some of the parking would be down by the, the cemetery, but if, if they. If we have enough people, we'll be parking them up across the street from the historical society, and people will be, that a little bit of traffic. Uh, issue that might be there, I don't know, we, we just want to make sure.
Did you contact with the police?
We're, that's what we're going to do. We'll, we'll have to know.
Yeah, you're, you're going to watch someone there.
Right, right, we, we will, we will, uh, that is on our agenda to get done the next day or two. And we'll make sure that they know all about that. And then, then, uh, the, uh. I, particularly for, for Jackie, for your, uh, benefit, that, uh, this is. Uh, added here, this is something that's been ongoing, and, uh, the, the, uh. Just, just for your, uh, information that the, uh, our. The building that we're in, we have a ninety-nine year lease on from the town, it's a town, uh, building. And, uh, so far, we've replaced the roof on it, we've replaced every window in it. Uh, we've gotten a, a ADA compliant bathroom in it, and now we're going to go after. Uh, we were, we, we don't have an ADA compliant entryway, and to do that, uh. Uh, plus we are desperately needed more space, uh, that we're, this, this, uh. A drawing here, we, we, we've given to the, the board before, just to, to, to show you what it is, but, uh, we're now at a point where. The window is opening for going after a matching grant, uh, which, which we will be, uh, trying to do. We've got money raised for the project, this is not costing the town anything for at all. Uh, but it's, it's just, we want to make sure that you, as the landlord, know what we're doing with your property. Uh, basically, is what we're talking about here, but it's, it's, uh, an exciting kind of thing, and, and it's, it's probably, we, we've been. Given a guesstimate cost of, of about two hundred thousand dollars, so now that we've got the rent, the roof on the church all. Done and paid for.
Yeah.
We're moving on to another, another project here that, that, uh, hopefully will be a nice addition to. To, uh, the building and to the town and, and, uh, whatever, so that is the story there. And then, then, uh, later this week on Thursday, I'm going to a meeting up, uh. And, uh, in Great Barrington of the, uh, state's two-hundred-and-fiftieth, uh, celebration. Uh, uh, committee that is checking on what we're, uh, the Western Mass is doing for, uh, the, uh. Uh, whole, uh, Knox Trail, uh, kind of situation, and the, uh, rumor has it that. Uh, Great Barrington is going to do something on, on, uh, the, the, um. I, it was the, the, uh, uh, the tenth of January, and, and, uh. Uh, Knox came here the day after that, and, and, uh, uh, so was talking about. Uh, the possibility of having a, a community-wide excitement about a bonfire. Uh, up at, at the fairgrounds, and the fairgrounds have, have been given a green light, that they are, they are happy to have us, uh. Uh, to, to do that, we talked with, uh, Matt and, and Draggy, know about it.
By which building they want to burn.
My hearing's terrible, maybe I shouldn't have heard that.
Never mind.
Anyway, anyway, that, that, that's, that, that is the, the thought that maybe we could, uh, and get. And the person that has, has, uh, been, uh, had came up with the idea of the bonfire is Melissa Hamm. And Melissa Hamm, I don't know if, if you, you know her or not, but, uh, this is Tom Ackley's daughter, one of his daughters, and, and, uh. Uh, uh, she's going to get, uh, the fire department all excited about being on top of helping us out and being a part of the whole thing, and making sure that we. Uh, do it all in a way that makes, makes sense, and, and now that we have these theatrical young twenty-eight-year-olds, uh, involved, we might, uh. Uh, put together, uh, some kind of a little program there and make it, uh, just a fun thing for the entire community. And, uh.
That's great.
The, the, the fair can have a big kettle out for donations for the fair, whatever, that, that, that is. Not meant for anything other than, you know, it's not a, a matter of, of tickets or anything like that, it's, it's, uh, it's a fun. Kind of way to prove that we're trying to do it. The other thing I would bring your, uh, attention that we, uh, have back, uh. In, in, uh, fifty years ago, we had the Bicentennial Times. And, uh, I don't know if, if you've been into the store, you see the big, uh, posting of the old Bicentennial Times. That were, there, there, there are sixteen of them, we started, uh, when the Lexington alarm happened, and every month. Fifty years ago, we came out with a new edition of it, and we're, we're, uh, enjoying. Providing each month a new copy, uh, of, of fifty years ago, what we, what we did for.
You have one here in the town hall?
Uh, we, no, uh, we just have done it for the, as a store, but, but, uh, I, uh. The, the problem is we need to have it in a, a nice frame and, 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 uh.
Right.
But where we, how we would do it, uh, is, is the story there, but anyway, that, that's a little updated, so a little up to, and, and, uh. Making sure that everybody.
Gathered by the, the, um.
No, they are independent of themselves, we.
Okay, so we don't have to worry about pre-answering. Okay.
And where's the quilt that we saw at the, uh?
The, the quilt is in, right, it's hanging upstairs.
Our museum up there.
I haven't been up there in a while.
Well, we, we've added some new things.
Yeah.
Uh, one of the nicest things is Chuck Benson has built a beautiful bench, a table up there for displaying. Small items and, and, uh, all made out of ash, he had to take some of the ash trees down, and he made it all into. A beautiful, a beautiful table for us, so.
Good.
Come see it.
Yeah, yeah, and I'll get in touch with you both.
That'd be great, yeah, okay. That, that's be great, we have, will provide the manpower, the assistance.
Okay, that's great.
Let me, let me know if you want to go over and look at it.
Yeah, I will.
Yeah, great.
Thank you, Chuck.
Thank you. Onward, onward.
Uh, Christina.
Yes, I have. Um, I have contacted the applicants for the treasurer collector position, I'm waiting for replies in order to set up, uh, interviews. We're going to do the interviews, uh, hopefully in conjunction with Sarah, so that we can get her input on the candidates. That's how we picked candidates from the pool, was with her input, we looked over some, uh, resumes. So I'm just waiting for replies, um, we're looking probably on Wednesdays, I don't know if that fits your schedule, um.
Well, what we were going to do, and I just want to make sure you're good with it, is Sarah, myself, and Christina, we're going to interview. Various people, I don't know how many we're going to wind up with, because some people may have already found jobs at this point. And then bring a couple to. Okay.
That's fine.
Yeah. Um. We received the updated language from legal counsel on the personnel policy, um, the only thing I want to say that the policy needs to be. Obviously voted on for you guys to adopt it in, you know, place, but also distributed to all the departments, so that everybody's aware. Of any changes. Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, did you get a chance to look at that language?
Yes, I did.
I think he replied, didn't you to the?
Yeah, I did.
Yeah, yeah, he said, looks good to me.
Okay, good, good, so do we need to do anything about that? I mean, does Karen give any feedback?
She has not. She's not.
I mean, I'm fine with it. Are we able to just go ahead and have?
You can make a motion, you, you have a court.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve the language for the licensing for the highway.
Oh, hold on, sorry, all right, just the licensing, because other things changed in the personnel policy.
Oh, there's a number of things.
Yeah, so what are you, you're not approving the policy as a whole?
I can.
Oh.
I'm just, I make a motion, I didn't know which one I was.
Yeah.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the entire policy that we updated with, throughout the last few weeks.
I second that.
Okay, any, I, I say yay, and, uh.
Yay.
Well, yay.
So we're all yays.
Yeah, we're all yays, I say yay because I'm glad.
Any discussion?
Uh, any discussion?
Joanne?
This is personnel policy you're talking about.
Personnel policy.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, we've scheduled, uh, an executive session for October twentieth for, uh. The highway superintendent's review of his contract.
Okay.
I got an email today about the water department, they did not get approved for fiscal year twenty-six, uh, E O E D grant for the ozone treatment. I supplied copies of that to the water department. Um, I've not heard from Brad on if he has spoken to the superintendent, water superintendent candidate, I know that he was supposed to reach out. Uh, I haven't heard, so I haven't been able to move forward at all. Uh, I.
Want me to follow?
Sure. Uh, I received the updated proposed scope of work and quote from Weston Sampson on the possible additional location. Study, the study itself will cost fourteen thousand two hundred dollars. And should the location be found suitable, there would be additional costs associated with a phase-one environmental site assessment. And a geotech investigation, copies of the information have been provided to you guys in your packets there. Uh, currently, there's approximately a hundred sixty-five thousand in that account. Uh, the total for Weston Sampson for task two schematic design with this new study. Uh, would be a hundred and twenty thousand, not including the previously mentioned site assessment and geotech study. In addition.
Go backwards just a little bit. Um, let's go back, just to.
Okay.
I know, you're, you're closer to it than.
Yeah, okay, so, there's currently a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars that I believe. We, they haven't done end of year, but I don't think anything else is going to hit that account, right, so a hundred sixty-five thousand, rough estimate, we'll say.
Yep.
With this new study, and it's in the, in your packet there, Weston and Sampson is saying. That to get through task two, it would, we would incur a hundred and twenty thousand. That's just Weston and Sampson, that doesn't. Account for any funds that we would have to spend on the O P M, City Point. And, uh, it doesn't account for any of the environmental site assessments or geotechnical investigations, so.
I thought that was included in the feasibility.
No.
It's not?
No.
And we don't know what that figure would be.
I can ask them, um, no, I don't know what it would be right now. So. That's that, uh, Ryan Vangel.
Well, wait a minute, I mean, sure, we need to talk about this. So, in order to be able to assess whether or not that area out there that you identified.
Right, yeah.
Is feasible, it's going to cost us another.
Fourteen thousand two hundred dollars.
That's it.
Yes.
For this step.
Yes.
We need to approve that.
I don't know if it's something you guys even want to do, if you want to move forward with them, so just keep in mind, the fourteen thousand two hundred is just. For them to say, it's doable, or it's not.
Which is what they've done with every other one.
Yeah.
But nothing.
I'm not saying it's not, but I'm also just saying, that's how much, we have the one sixty-five.
Understood.
If they say, yeah, we could do this site, there's going to be additional costs because it's a site acquisition, it's not a property that we already own.
Correct.
So there is a geotechnical study that needs to be done, and an environmental site assessment that needs to be done, and then obviously, you're talking.
Which we didn't have to do that for the other ones, because we already own the property.
Correct.
Yeah.
And that's going to be a hundred and twenty, you said.
Hmm, that I don't know the cost on. The additional environmental stuff, I don't know the cost on. I, I know that the one twenty is for Weston and Sampson only, so we're not even talking about City Point.
Yeah.
Weston and Sampson.
No, I get that.
Okay, so, that's the additional feasibility study. Not any of the other stuff that goes with that property, and then the other tasks that are identified in the schematic design phase. Through Weston and Sampson is the one twenty.
Okay.
Now, they, they need to get, well, I, I'm assuming that the, uh. This fourteen K is also they get them acquiring a copy of the disease of the deed. So they know where the boundaries are and all that.
Oh, yeah. Well, so additionally, in in addition to this, we need permission, right?
Well, yeah, yeah.
So there would need to also have to be some sort of, I'm sure, meeting with legals to meet with this individual who owns the property to draw up a document that allows us to. Be on that property doing what they need to do.
I have to reach out and tell them that we're doing this and that. It'll be hearing from them, I would think. Or is that our responsibility?
I I'm not entirely sure. I've never been through this process before, but something would need to be signed. We 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 would need it, writing that for allowed to be there yet. When I say be, I mean Weston and Sampson or whoever that they have to allow to do that.
Well, they could, all right, so let's just walk through this for a second. So maybe go out and look at it for fourteen thousand two hundred. We still have to get the. Owner involved with that process, right? Possibly get something signed for them to be able to do that.
Yeah.
If they come back and they say, hey, yeah, we could probably do it here. I'm gonna throw it on the table that I would recommend that we take, we only go with that when we go to the town because it could be. That we, you know, to spend this other hundred and twenty or whatever it's gonna take. That the town may say we don't want it there. I mean, they're gonna have two options on the table possibly, which is this new place that.
No, I I no, I understand that, but I mean, uh. Well, that's a bridge we're gonna have to cross to get there. I mean, first, we gotta find out if it's feasible. All right, and then.
Well, just this environmental study.
Well, that will be, that would be after we uh. Come to the town.
So so just point being here to your point, Jackie, the town could vote to say, yes, we want this new location. And we could sit down at the table with the owner and the owner could say, yeah, I'll give it to you five million. He gets to set the price. He is the owner. So even if the town votes and says that they want it, are you guys gonna pay for that property?
Uh when when I spoke with him, uh I told him, you know, that. We know that he was asking sixty five K for, all right? And uh he said, how hard would you be willing to go? And I said, I really don't know. I said, but, you know, I I would like to use the sixty five K at the starting point. And I said, that's, you know. And he's looking at it, but what he had explained to me was that. He wants to get rid of the property that he, the town has given him a lot of leeway with the uh. Cannabis growing facility and that, and he would be willing to work with us. And he would even be willing to sign check and papers. For us, it was two shows, two so choose to buy, purchase the property.
Like a memorandum of understanding prior to the meeting, I think, is something that we would have to do.
I guess uh but just to go on that question of could he come back and say, well, I'm gonna mill you a quarter. But but let me just say, when we looked at the property across the street next to the firehouse.
Yeah.
And spoke to that guy, who whoever gentleman, whoever owns that house. I thought they could only go with market value. They couldn't just say whatever they wanted.
It's private property. You can sell it.
Yeah, they can ask whoever they want. His wife was the one objected to it.
All right, um so I I we vote?
If you'd like to.
The fourteen two?
If you would like to, I can't tell you.
No, I know, but you want at the process is what I'm saying. Uh I'm asking.
Yeah, I think they're.
Not saying giving approval, I'm saying.
No, no, I know. I I just don't know if you wanna have a more in-depth conversation about it. Um I I was just letting you know, they got back to me. Here's the information. I'm not.
I would like to, you know, if I my vote would be to go move forward with the fourteen. And get get their opinion of the property.
Okay.
You know, uh cuz it's important to the town.
Okay. I'm I'm for it.
So do you wanna make a motion?
Yes, I make a motion to go and approve the fourteen thousand two hundred to have Sampson and Weston. Take a look at the property that we're. What's the address, Jackie?
Well, it's across from four North Lanford Road, so I would say four or nine.
It's parcel seven point two on North Lanford and Road. It's on North Lanford and Otis.
Once we do that, then we'll determine how we're gonna approach, what we're gonna approach the town with in the next steps. But it either says it's a viable environmental solution, you know, it passes go or it doesn't.
Okay. Um Ryan Bangle had reached out. There was an issue, uh Ryan Moes. There was an issue with the Sumac over there uh by the post office.
Yes.
So this is a before and after. I gave him the okay, I said, yes, go ahead. So this is what it looked like before, and then that's what it looks like today.
Oh, that's cool.
That's great.
That's great.
So my only question to the board, cuz when he came to me with this, I said, um. Okay, I said, is there anything we can do to 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 keep it from coming back? And he said, there is, I'm not gonna say it, right? It's some kind of spray that he can purchase. Um to stunt the regrowth of it, triclop spray, does that sound? I don't know. Um but the.
I haven't heard of it.
No, but so the spray, I guess, costs like around five hundred dollars. So are you okay with just this for now or do you?
Well, when I had Schumach on my property and oil go up. I cut I cut it all down and then I wrote it till it and it took all of the itself and never came back.
Well, maybe, well, I don't know if he wrote until it though. I don't know if he ripped off the roots.
Yeah.
Um, okay. I spoke with both Sarah Hunter and Michaela Smith today. Michaela, if you may or may not be aware. Is uh our administrative assistant in the assessor's office.
Okay.
Oh, great.
Um so there's a quite a bit, I guess, of backlog of work in that office. And she is really trying to sift her way through all of that. And in conjunction with Sarah, I you have been talking to Sarah. About tax title, about outstanding taxes that haven't been paid, what are we doing type of thing? And so Sarah's really putting all that together, working on it, and that's gonna be a component that Michaela is gonna have to work with. I told her I would speak to the board tonight, just something for you guys to think about moving forwards, perhaps something we could put on a special town meeting warrant. She's, that position is only allotted eight to ten hours a week. And that's very difficult to prioritize the tasks, I guess, that need to get done in that office. And so.
In the assess.
In the assessors, yeah. And so realistically, it should be staffed closer to around fifteen to twenty hours a week in order to operate efficiently. This is what I'm being told. What I don't really, yes, Joanne.
Um I they should know that there used to, just like the tax office, there used to be more coverage and that.
Absolutely.
Went away and it never was replaced.
Right.
And now they plumped Niko uh Michaela in that seat and said, just do it. So she's.
Could the assessor come in and ask?
Well, we used to have a board of assessors that had three components and they worked with. The uh, you know, cuz my wife was one of them. She used to come down twice a week and work with uh. The secretary to get things squared away. I and I think the secretary was uh. Run the mar at the time.
Did that position? The structure of that position has changed dramatically in the past year and a half. They're expecting a lot more from her than what started.
Yeah, I don't doubt it, no.
So I'm just passing along the.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah.
And and you know, look, you know, I'm a proponent, I am personally a proponent of if we need the hours for work to get done, we should.
We have to do it.
I'm a little challenged by the fact that we keep running into these situations where there once was or what happened to that? Who and and so our budget looks great, but at the same time, like, we're putting more in cash. And not filling these roles.
Exactly.
Appropriately. And what's gonna happen is we're gonna get kind of excised hat, we're gonna get time doing the work to bring the revenue in. Right, which the town can't afford. So I I mean, it what I would prefer, I mean, if you're relaying the message, they need that many hours. I would prefer, let's get, what do they need?
I believe that they are have, they the assessors are having a meeting where they're gonna discuss this.
So you're kind of giving us the heads up.
Just let you know. I had today.
Yeah.
Yeah, cuz.
Yeah.
You gotta stay on top of that.
Oh, yeah.
Um the next department level meeting will be held on October twenty seventh. I sent out an email to everyone. And I included the Vadar training video. Um so everybody has access to that. And if anybody else wants it, certainly I'm. I will share it. Um additionally, I let them all know, and when I say them, that sounds rude. I I let the departments know. That the November meeting, uh which I, we haven't picked the date for yet, but we will obviously at the October meeting. I let them know that we'll be focusing on capital improvement items for the F Y twenty seven budget and ask them to be.
Prepared.
Prepared to speak on that. Uh.
Can we get um? I guess you'd call it a department, but I I've I've always wanted to know what exactly. The gentleman does with the veterans. We have a ten thousand dollar budget for that.
It's from the state.
Understood, but it's still money that we have to put in there every year. That money is for what?
Is for assistance for veterans, whether they need help with heating oil, medical bills.
We never spent it. I I want an understanding as to, you know, I I would hope that if there's anyone out there that is a veteran that needs support. Winter's coming up. They may need some support. I don't know. But I'd like to get some an update from him as to what's going on with that.
So you.
And and.
I don't know the gentleman's name.
Needs not being expended, then obviously the veterans in town may not know it's available.
That's possible. I don't know. I don't know. I just wanna understand what's going on there.
Maybe we should have uh Mary put a article in uh when she does the town.
Well, we need to clearly know what it's, how you do it, though.
Yeah, well.
Process. So if we could do that and have him maybe come in and explain the process, that would be great. For the department meeting. You agree?
Cuz I think it also helps for uh. Veterans that have all that post stress and drone.
I I don't know the.
Yeah.
Okay.
He gets money through development, so.
So I, a few weeks ago, put out a R F P on combines and in the newspaper and on our website. For assessor services because we use Regional Resource Group, R R G, as our assessor. Uh we got one letter from Tyler. Uh it's a name that's that's the name of the company, Tyler, and they said. We're too busy, thanks, but no thanks. You know, we saw your posting, but we're not interested. And then the only other response that we got was from R R G. They gave us um. A quote for three, three individual quotes for the next three fiscal years, including this one. This really should have been done a while ago, but it was, it wasn't. Um so they are the only option for us right now. I sent the notice to R R G. I didn't speak with legal counsel. They're going to take a look at the contract, sign it, and then you guys can sign it for with R R G. We received a change of use notice for thirty two Nine Brook Road, which will include a hundred and fourteen acres. For the purpose of logging.
For logging.
I gave copies to the town clerk, assessors, the left board, and planning. But here's the original. And for me, that's, I think, a chip for now.
What about the uh, what did we wind up doing with the gentleman that uh applied for the water superintendent?
I I so Brad was supposed to call him.
Okay.
And I haven't.
Heard from him.
Have not. Oh, you know, that's right, you weren't here, T J. Yes, we had a meeting and they were, they. Going to attempt to offer him.
Yeah, that's what I was wanting to say. Okay. Cuz I thought it was kind of up in the air and then it was a heat on and all that.
Is there any, just to go back for a second on the assessors, is there anything that you're concerned about or that 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 we're not billing? Or something of that nature that we need to address and help or?
I don't know enough about it to be a hundred percent transparent with you. I don't know enough about it. It does, from what I have seen. It does make sense that things are probably a little bit backlogged.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I just wanna make sure that we're not like delayed on billing or something.
Well, we have one one person running the assessor's office for a couple of years and. I don't think he really knew what he was doing. And I think that's probably.
Um we got audited, right? We had our audit, which is great. Got this feedback. Are you gonna meet with them first? And then come back to us with what are the highlights of, I mean, I did read the audit, but of any. Concerns or challenges that we need to address. But what are your thoughts there?
Uh I think beyond the audit information itself, I I certainly asked Tony for. A meeting and and I I think he's probably just gonna read to me what the audit says. I don't know.
But what do we need to do if there's, you know, there's, there's certain points that he did make throughout the audit. And I'm not sure if there's things that we need to execute on and do or make sure it doesn't happen again.
So when I met with him last year, his big thing was funding the O P E V. That was what we needed to do. And he hasn't pointed out anything, but I can certainly touch base with him and see if there is something else besides the O P E V.
If there isn't, then that's right, right? Cuz we're doing that now.
Yeah.
Right, appropriately. And we haven't gotten any update from Ray, I take it, from.
No.
What's going on?
I mean, that was on my list, but I didn't, it wasn't pertinent. It's not here, we can't get in the party.
I didn't know if he maybe reached out to you or not.
I haven't.
Any comments from our esteemed audience, residents, anybody?
Oh, go ahead. They're talking about, you know, bylaws and stuff like that with Haley's green plan. Can't she just override everything? Can't she just say, all right, but it's going to be done? Or is that something that we need to look into?
So her, it it is gonna be done, right? It is. But what we can do with the bylaws is mitigate how much and where. But to your point, yes, it is, it's gonna happen. Yeah.
But it's right, but there's still, you know, from talking to the attorneys, there's still some opportunity to at least, right? Decide when, you know, maybe our bylaws aren't strong enough to where it's not far enough away from the street or something. Something that will booster it up, bolster it up a little bit.
It sounds like they do a lot of things together, for sure.
Yeah.
Well, what 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 happened was back, you know, when we were in the first process of the green community and that. We did have setbacks for how close the solar could be to a property line, and that was a hundred feet. But one of the solar companies, well, the one on Chester Road. Uh they chose not to abide by the bylaw and put put everything in, exactly. And uh then they volunteered, well, we'll put trees on his property. So they could keep their solar. And he said, no, you know, get yourself where it's supposed to be. And the town never did anything. And so the fight is, is that we really have to have more control. If we're gonna make these bylaws, we have to have a way of making sure they're being adhered to.
Right, well, I think that's an important part, T J, is that not only that we have the bylaws and that the bylaws protect us and are appropriate. But the follow-through on the bylaw.
Yeah.
That, you know, even if we do all the right things and get all the right language in there, we're lacking the component of the follow-through, right? Who's checking up on these order of conditions? Who's making sure that things are being done?
Right.
And I think that's something that we're also gonna have to look into, a gap in.
Well, that's why, you know, like with the part, that's why we would have an O P M.
Yeah.
Because they're looking out for us.
But even, so you're talking about just as soon as it's built and then, okay, but what about after that, you know? Things like that, we we have to make sure that.
Right, if there's things in place even for the vendor, right, that someone is following up with the vendor and making sure that they're fulfilling their end of their obligation to us.
I see. Unfortunately, when we did the solar, we didn't have that follow, follow-up. You know, and we never. You know, and we never, yeah, exactly, because. We have volunteers, you know, they have jobs. So they can't go in, like when they were clear cutting, they there was no one there to make sure that they were staying within the boundaries. You know, because everybody went to work.
But these are things that we want to make sure in our.
These are things we have to address.
Anybody else? Alright, it is seven thirty five, meeting is adjourned.